To be sure that on Thursday at our meeting, and this is also posted on all our agendas, that people can still address items on the agenda. They would have to do that remotely. They would have to download the Zoom app on their phone, computer, or whatever. And they would need to email me 24 hours prior to the meeting with their email address so that I could give them an invite so that they could speak to any items on the agenda. So that even though we're meeting remotely, that still is open to our citizens.
Yes.
Okay. The first three policies, the first three policy that we are covering are requests from the state comptroller is that when we become audited, they have reached out to boards of education, to Tennessee school boards, that because we are paying employees during a time that their work has been interrupted one way or the other. Some of our employees are working virtually or teleworking. Some of them are doing essential work. Some of them are on rotating schedules or flexible schedules. Some of them are not working at all because of certain allowable leave that we will talk about today. So I ask, and the recommendation is, is that when you, if you choose to pass these policies, that you backdate them to April the 1st. And this is when the Family First Corona Relief Act took into place. The federal law, the FF-CRA law took into place on April the 1st. April the 1st is just happens to be the first day that we used days beyond our stockpile. So we had spring, I mean, we were, we closed school on May the 16th was the last day we used, I mean, excuse me, not May, March, March 16th. So we use March 17, 18, and 19 as stockpile days. We came back after spring break and used March the 30th and the 31st as stockpile days. And that exploited all of our stockpile days. And during those stockpile days, we didn't require work of anybody because they were kind of already banked through the extra 30 minutes that we get every day. But on April the 1st, when we applied, those are waived days. So from April the 1st on, it's been waived days, but it just happened to simultaneously tie in to the law. So the first policy is the emergency closing. The letter, the wording in black is existing policy that was already there. TSBA recommended the language that's in blue. And our school board attorney looked through all of these policies and made additions. And so her additions were in red. I think the key to this is the employee responsibilities. The big thing here is in line 12, it says that the director of schools is authorized to continue to pay employees who are not physically able to work for duty as a result of whatever that health emergency is. Is you-
Which in this case is the COVID, is that correct?
Yes, right. And it may not be COVID the next time, you know, it might be something else. So it's kind of open. Also, that this is, this is important for, that we are trying to pay all the employees that we can because you've seen some of this stimulus money. It's called the CARES Act. That there may be money that we're able to recoup later on, but I don't think the state can even start to fill that application out until Friday, the 17th. So the law says that employers should make every effort to pay their employees to the fullest extent possible. And we have been able to do that with all of our employees except our people who do not have a reasonable expectation of work every day, such as our after-school. They don't work 180 days. They don't start until after Labor Day. They don't work on days that schools close or that we're out for snow. Those, and those are extra positions. And also, our substitute teachers do not have a reasonable expectation to work every day. Other than that, we've paid all of our employees. We feel like we're in compliance with the CARES Act and that we might be able to recoup some of these expenditures down the road. Other key components of that is that it says in line 15, "Such payments shall not exceed the numbers of days budgeted for the employees." So they only work what they're budgeted for within the school calendar. It also says in line 16, "The director of schools may designate certain employees as essential," for which I have done under Governor Lee's executive order, I think that's 22. And it also says that the director also has the authority to excuse, on line 20, "The director is authorized to excuse employees designated as essential in a public health emergency if those employees are victims or potential carriers of an illness." So at any time that somebody is sick or is carrying something, then the director can, for public health, can excuse those. And then also, the last sentence I think is important, or the last line 22, "Health authorities as particularly vulnerable to the illness causing the public health." So, that are particularly vulnerable. These get into a lot of your American Disabilities Act employees, and these are the employees that are 65 or older, are employees who have compromised immune deficiency or health conditions. And a lot of our staffs, our non-certified staffs, particularly those in food service, are in that category for which we have not required them to work. So anybody over 65 and anybody with compromised immune, we have required them not to come to work. And the law does ask that they, if they have a compromised immune, that they provide some type of medical documentation, but we're working on that as we go. Is any questions or comments to the revisions to this policy?
Only that on line number 20, it says, "Excuse employees designed as essential." I think you said you wanted it to say designate.
Oh.
Designated, and it says designed.
Okay.
Yeah, you might-
Yeah, I gotta find a pencil. Well, there it is, right up on our paper. Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Waller.
Uh huh.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move to the next one about telework. This is a new policy, totally new. And the pieces of this, again, the black, the black is TSBA wording, the blue is attorney wording that she added to that. But basically, the director now is authorized to allow people to work off-campus or from their original place of work, and they can work at home if they can efficiently telework at home. You know, some people, like, you can't tele-drive a bus, you can't tele-clean a school building, you know, you can't tele-mow school grounds. But for those employees that can, then I can designate them to be able to telework. Also, I thought that the attorney did a good job here, starting in the blue on line 12, is if they're teleworking from home, there are some safeguards, both physical safeguards, technical safeguards, and also confidentiality that's stated real well, that even though that they're working from home, that all those physical and, all those physical, technical, and confidential safeguards are in place at home, just like they would be if they were on campus. And Andy says that's a great idea. Any comments on this policy? And this is a new policy. And remember that they are all recommendations from the comptroller. The last policy is actually this poster. And this is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act poster. The law requires that this is posted with all wage and hour information in all places where employees congregate or sign in and out. The only issue with this is we don't have any employees in school right now. So we emailed this to all our certified and our non-certified, and then mailed it to the, like, the bus drivers who don't usually use email. And the, there's two major pieces to this, is there's the, there's the expanded, there's the emergency sick leave. So if someone has COVID-19, or they have to be quarantined for COVID-19, that they get two weeks, equivalent of two weeks or 80 hours of full-paid sick leave. This is in addition to the sick leave that they're already allowed. They can use it in place of their allowable sick leave. They don't have to use their allowable sick leave before they use this emergency, I mean, this emergency sick leave. And they are paid at 100%. The second part of this is the expanded family medical leave. And this is basically allowed care, especially care for children. So this is where this is appli, is applicable to a lot of our employees is, and we have several, that they, that they, they work for the school because their kids go to, their children go to school. And then where we're out for COVID-19, you know, they could come and work essential duties, but they have nobody to care for their children. So this gives them up to, up to 12 weeks of paid sick leave in case they have to take care of their children or themselves. So this policy, so the, basically, that this policy is a brand-new policy, and it goes hand in glove with the, with the poster. And I was seeing if I could bring that down there. And it also, I think, is really good, is it says that employees should seek clarification. And we've had a lot of, we've had a lot of traffic on who qualifies, how much they get, a lot of questions. So employees should seek, employees with questions should seek clarifications from Human Resources, and that is Angie and I, and Angie has predominantly handled 95% of those questions over the last couple of weeks. And of course, the attorney did a couple of other things, is like on line 28, being sure the leave will be calculated according to the limitations and caps provided by statute and regulations. So you just, you can't, like, take advantage of it. And again, she added up to the caps provided in federal law. So this is basically a TSBA policy recommendation with a few language changes from, from the attorney. Any questions or comments about this third policy? Please remind, please be mindful that we're asking the board to backdate all of these policies to be effective by April the 1st. April the 1st is when the FF-CRA law went into effect, and it is also the first day that we used leave outside of stockpile days. So that fits hand in glove really well there.
Clint, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So these are new policies that are going into our policy book and will be used in case of another pandemic at, sometime in the future, or do they sunset?
No, sir. They are, they are to be there forever, is the idea. So what, they tried to develop these policies in case we have another pandemic, that these policies will already be in place.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I think you've actually heard, I mean, I don't like bringing up in this kind of meeting, but, you know, they say that they may have another spell of this in the fall. Have y'all heard this?
Yep. Yep, I've heard of that.
So the policies would already be in place?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
The, the next item on your consent agenda, of course, y'all can move them at any time, and I think Mr. Kerr is very, I think, well, I think all of you, I think we've discussed this, but I know Mr. Kerr came from the education meeting. This conversation started when I was at a waterborne meeting, and they were working on their budget for FY '21, and they were talking about giving their employees a 3% salary increase for next year. And I think they landed at 2.5% that day. And it seemed to be, of course, nobody, I mean, I don't know if they have to or not, but nobody let me know that they were looking to do raises next year. But I caught wind of it, and I brought it up at the Education Committee, and about the idea of doing the same thing for our non-certified. And there was only one commissioner in the whole group that had any questions about that whatsoever. And I've talked to Chairman Jewell, and he advised us to put it in our, to put it in our budget for FY '21, for which I have done, and we'll talk about later this evening. But you have a list of all our non-certified positions to look at, and all of those positions, including yours, Andy, has a 2.5% increase for next year contingent upon county commission funding. The only things that were not applied to the 5% was, I mean, excuse me, the 2.5% was substitute teachers, summer maintenance, part-time, like, bus monitors, traffic monitors, substitute bus drivers, and the after-school, the after-school staff. And of course, you can come back at any time you want to and address these if you would like to, you know, for the, of course, this is just a preliminary budget, but this certainly gets all of our full-time, non-certified with a 2.5% increase. And if you can approve those, then they will also be included in the preliminary budget that we'll speak to later on. Questions and comments here?
I don't have any problem with that. So, I'm good with everything.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just said, I'm good, I'm good with everything, too. And I'm-
Well, the only comment, the only comment I wanted to make was that we, I was there that night, and we made it clear to them that we expect our employees that are non-certified to get the same pay raise that they're gonna get, they get one for the rest of the county.
Absolutely.
And Mr. Kerr, you served on the county commission a long time, and just up until a couple of years ago, that's exactly how it used to be done, that whatever, whatever raise they gave county employees, they extended that to our non-certified staff as well.
Right, right. And I think that's no different. We do have a new mayor, who this will be his first time dealing with this, but I don't think that'll be an issue. He was there at that meeting, that primary meeting. And he didn't have any problems with that. So I don't see any problem with that moving forward. The only problem may be is whether or not they can fund that much money for the whole county.
And Mr. Kerr, don't, please don't hold me to this, because this is right off the top of my head, but the amount, the total amount is around, is around $40,000, a little bit more.
Yes, sir, I believe that's right.
It's in the low 40s, and that's equivalent to less than 2 cents on the tax rate. Less than 2 cents.
And that's for the whole county non-certified, or just I-
This does. This just does.
Okay, 40, around 40,000.
Yeah, it's a little, it's over 40, but it's not 45, you know, somewhere in the mid, the low 40s. Okay, thank you. The next question is, and I've got the principals on standby, and trust me, they can do Zoom calls. We have one about every day, they're really good at it. The question for the board is, you know, we're doing this remotely, and then, you know, we're having some snafus, you know, like we've had this evening, and I don't know, I mean, our principals will be glad to be here. I'm sure they have a lot to report on about how our continuity of learning has gone and feedback that they can present, but I have not required the principals to be here yet. And I told them that I would speak to you and let you guide me going forward. But they are, they can do Zoom calls, and they'll be glad to be here, it's just, it's just the wish of the board.
Unless they had something real pertinent. I mean, I feel like you could probably give a good update on their behalf, unless the others want them to be a part.
I think they could actually give a better report than I could, because, you know, they've kind of been in the trenches with parents and students and teachers every day. And, and again, they don't mind, but I was just worried about the length of the meeting, you know, the breakdown of technology, and I was just trying to do, get the simple things out first. But again, that's your call. And I don't think it would, if you want to do that, I don't think it would be bad to have Kathy Atwood to report to you at some point in time about the food services. You know, I can give those reports, but, I mean, I'm talking so much now, my horse, my, I'm getting hoarse, my throat's getting dry.
I think, I think most of us would be prepared for, or could prepare for a little extra, longer meeting. I can, if everybody else can.
Yeah, I can, too.
I think it's fine, but really, I think after, after we get through with the work session, if we have any direct questions for, we could let you know then, because so far from what I've seen, there's really not anything that they could add to, or anything, but there may be an issue that comes up later that we may need one or all of them addressed.
Okay, good. I think, I think I hear-
Everybody, yeah, everybody's done a really good job, you and everybody, of keeping us abreast. And I feel like, yeah, I feel like we are all really well-informed.
Well, it's a, it's a new landscape, it's a new environment, and we're learning how to live in it, aren't we, Andy?
We are.
But we're getting, we're getting better. And we're gonna be better because of, I mean, I think there's a lot of good things that have come from it. Okay, if you don't mind, then I'll move to the new business piece. And Mr. Kerr may want to add a little bit to this, I know he's been at the education meetings and stuff as well. And I, and again, he was talking about communication, and I've tried to put this in your newsletter every week. The, the, the holdup with me is that, you know, we've worked really hard to get this bid out, and last week ago, Thursday, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. And John, the architect, you know, before we met, felt like he had three good potential bidders that would be at the, the pre-bid meeting. But only one showed up, and that was A Alert Roof System. Now, what's good about A Alert is A Alert is the group that we've been in contact with the most, and they actually gave us an estimate back in June of last year of $830,000 for that roof. Now, talking to John, there's a couple of things that they hadn't accounted for when they got up on the roof. There are some gas lines there on top of the roof that's gonna have to be relocated. And then there are two fresh air units that we thought might have to be raised a little bit to get the roof under them. But from walking that thing the other day, the guy with A Alert thinks that they might can work with those fresh air units and not have to pick them up and could save us some money. So I was talking to a county commissioner just a couple of days ago, they called me and wanted to know how it was going, and I talked to them, and of course, they're pretty involved, and told them that we only had one bidder, but what I felt good about is we had that quote from last year to compare it to. And they, too, felt like, even though we had one bidder, that gives us something to compare it to. So the, the issue is, we only have one bidder, we do have something to compare it to. Another thing that they talked about, and I sent you the color chart, by the way, you can look at that color chart, but down at the bottom in the middle, there are some standard colors, and there's a color called Galvoolum, and it's like a, it's like a silver shine to it, and it has the same warranty, but it's not, it's a standard color, it's a standard color, and it doesn't, you don't get to select the color of the roof, but it's a, it's a silver-type color, looks about like a nickel. And, and he says if you could go with that standard color, then it would bring the, he could help us a lot on the cost of that roof. So I asked him if he would bid it like that. Remember that that roof only has a 12-to-1 pitch, which is not real high, and that school sits up on a hill, and you're not gonna see much of that roof anyway. And I'm not even saying that because I think the color looks bad, I think the color looks fine, but you don't get to pick the color, you know, if you like green, blue, red, or whatever, you can't pick it when you go with the Galvoolum. So I asked him to bid the Galvoolum, and then where we could compare it, and if we can get it under that estimate, I would feel good making that recommendation to the board and to the county commission. But I'd like to hear your thoughts on it now.
I, I think that's a good idea, unless y'all want me to pick out the color.
No, 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 thank you.
And for anybody that's listening to this, they need to know that Mr. Kerr is colorblind.
Right. But, and you know, this is a girl question, but you think that the color of the school and that roof, what would be seen, would look nice? Like, you know, we don't want to put-
No, it's not ugly at all. And, oh, and you also got those color selections, you still get to pick the color of your gutters and your downspouts. So you get to pick those colors, it's just the roof that you don't get to pick the color up.
That's good, because the downspouts is really what you're gonna see.
Right.
Very little of that roof will ever be seen.
Yeah, I know that we talked about that, right, the last time. So I'm fine with that, too, as long as what would be seen wouldn't look bad.
Yeah, we just don't know what's gonna come in. Our bid opening is at 1:00 on Thursday. We'll have the bid before you at about 6:00 at the regular session, and you'll have, you'll have to make decisions. So I don't know what it's gonna look like. I've tried to do everything I can to keep that cost down, you know, in an environment where we only have one bidder. But again, the great thing, we have that estimate to compare it to, so we're not driving in the dark, so to speak.
And you think that will, that will be okay with the commission, that we just had that one bidder? And you think that will, that will be okay with the commission that we just had that one bidder? Mr. Kerr, you, you know, from the past when they've had just the one bidder, does that, you know, kind of red flag or anything?
Well, everybody would like to have it. You know, you'd like to have ten companies bidding on it. But in this day and age, you know, uh, with all the roofing problems that are out there with tornadoes and everything, uh, you know, you can't make people bid. And John did all he could do. He, he presented it to three good qualified bidders and they had the opportunity and they chose not to show up. So unless they're doing something with each other to help this one, you know, there's nothing we can do about that.
Right, okay.
So we just have to wait and see when it comes in. But I've also attached the, uh, quote from last June for your review that you're able to see.
Okay.
Uh, the next one, it just came out today from T S B A. And this is all new to you. It's new to me. It came out about nine o'clock this morning. But the state board of Ed met last Thursday and they suspended a lot of their policies. Basically those around credits and graduation. So what T S B A is asking boards to do is to look in to suspend in some of our present policies so that they align to what the state board did last Thursday. And this is not a policy, but a resolution. And what the main things that they talk about is the policy four point six oh oh, the grading system. And I think this is like really good. It says that students, students taking courses for high school credit shall receive no grade lower than the grade that they earn in the course as of a date. March the eleventh is the last day of the third nine weeks. We had all these grades in. They finished their nine weeks test, their nine weeks grade, their benchmarks. These grades have been recorded and they have been mailed to parents. So I thought that even though we didn't leave school until March the sixteenth, that March the eleventh was a good fair date, but I think y'all need to discuss that.
They were there through March eleventh, right?
Yes, sir. Well, we, we were in school until Mar, through March the sixteenth.
Right.
But March.
Yeah, I think March eleventh is good. They're ready to finish three full nine week periods.
Exactly.
So that's, I mean, to me, that's a, that's a no brainer.
And that date will, will kind of be the, the flag in the dirt. You know, that flag that we set, it has to do with promotion and retention. Everybody aware of that?
Yes, yes.
And then waiving graduation requirements. Uh, only have to have twenty credits to graduate. That's not going to affect us because it is March the eleventh. If they were passing by March the eleventh, they're going to get their credits. And if you don't, they don't have to have but twenty. And it also waives the A C T. However, I think we have to be a little bit careful about that. Is we actually have a few seniors that are graduating this year that have moved in like from out of state or has came from a homeschool and they don't have an A C T. I think it's imperative that all students have an opportunity to have an A C T so that they can go to college, work, that type of thing. The state right now has a free A C T test that they will give to seniors in July. So hopefully we'll be past this COVID nineteen thing by July and they can take a free A C T test. But it's not required for graduation. Also, the civics exam has been waived, not required for graduation. And no end of course exams are required for graduation. Uh, questions or comments about that? I thought this was well done.
Absolutely. Yeah, they seem to have hit on everything this time.
Yes, sir. And then, and then our testing policy four point seven hundred, I mean, four point seven oh oh is students will not be required to take the T cap for the spring semester. That's even if we come back to school. So what the board is declaring is we're not taking any tests at any time that we come back in this semester. So that's what that resolution's about.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be back, but the main reason I think they would try to come back if they could would be mainly for feeding people and, you know, for making sure the kids are fed.
And graduating.
Which we're doing a good job of that anyway.
And graduation, you know, I, I think we've all got some, uh, comments, you know, last few days about, thoughts about graduation that I know you want to discuss later.
Before you came on, we, some of us talked about that. We, we're going to discuss that later.
Okay. And then, uh, policy of five point one oh nine about the teacher evaluations is the level of effectiveness should not be generated in the, in this school year. Again, that's a state board policy. And teachers will not be evaluated using the portfolios in this year. Uh, and any observations that were not completed this year at the time of the COVID nineteen outbreak, then our principals are not required to finish them. I guess that would be the same for the director of schools. If y'all hadn't finished my principals evaluations, then I'm not to finish them as well. That's what it looks like to me. Uh.
That, that sounds, that sounds right. I mean, you betrayed them the same as you would your teachers.
That's what I would think. Uh, another thing is if a teacher was up for a license renewal, uh, policy five point eight oh two, if a teacher is up for a renewal this year, this summer, they have to have, uh, their professional development points. And in a lot of that's based on their evaluation. I think they can earn up to like forty points in this year just on the evaluation alone. And since they're not going to get an evaluation, then the state board has extended that license renewal for another year. So they don't have to worry about that this year. And the other part of that is, and I word sped this up just a little bit, is for attendance. And this is in line with what we're presently doing, is students may not be penalized for non-attendance of district learning. One of the things that we talk to our parents about, that our continuity of learning, we think it's good. We think it's high quality. We encourage our parents and our students to, to participate, but it's not for a grade and it's totally optional. So that's what they're saying, that a student could not be penalized if they choose not to participate in our district, uh, district, district learning. Comments?
Yeah, I watched the, uh, five thirty National News tonight and, uh, there was a lot of talk on, on it about, uh, and some on the morning shows. Since Ken Yorick, we watch a lot of news now.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're, they're really talking about how kids are going to get behind and that type of thing. And then all, and schools are doing the best that they can to try to mitigate that. But, you know, if we, if next fall there, you know, we just, this is new territory. We just don't know what we're going to be dealing with when school resumes.
I think the longer we stay out, the longer starting schools back up become, become more difficult.
I agree. And what we may get into is the, the beginning of the next time we can go to school may be more remediation than, than new learning.
Right, right. Backing up and trying to catch them up. That, I mean, this will have repercussions for several school years to come.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's always some part of that, but, you know, I just would expect, we should expect more of that, I think.
I agree.
And I hope the state takes that into consideration, uh, if they're planning on testing and all that next year. You know, with our, you know, you, you know, the kids are going to have to be being remediated quite a bit.
Right.
Let me try this out on you and nobody's asked me my opinion of it. But it looks like to me, the longer we stay out, let's say that we don't get to return this year. And we know there's going to be a loss of learning and we're doing, and our teachers and principals are doing an awesome job to try to mitigate that. And I know that we're mitigating, I know we are, but there's still going to be a loss of learning. There's always a loss of learning during the summer. I was wondering if the state could, and I don't know if they can get it back in a timely manner, especially with paper and pencil. But if they had some type of assessment, especially for reading and math, at the beginning of the year when we started back and could assess students and then give us some feedback really, or data back really quick, then we might see what the students have lost and we would know better how to intervene. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, that would be good. That would be a, uh, that would be the first time as a nation we were be able to go in and actually determine how much loss of learning takes place during summer vacation. Now, this would be an extended one. But, you know, I, I don't know that, you know, they would have to start working on that exam now to, to get one that would be, uh, applicable to.
Right. And, you know, something that's non-graded, but just would help teachers assess their students. Right. Okay.
Clint, are you talking about something generated from the state level?
Yes, ma'am. You know, if they, if they've, if they've got this money left from T cap that they're not using, maybe we could get some type of refund on it and then design something that would help us when we start schools back up is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
That would, that would be good for each teacher to be able to know where their classroom is at that particular time. And then they would know where to start.
And then the rest of it, and you can read this for yourself, if the director of schools will stay in contact with the board and let them know about other policies that we might have to waive. So, uh, are you seem to be, is this seem to, uh, can we keep that on the agenda? Is that all right?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. Mr. Kerr?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, the, uh, the star of the show is the budget for next year. Uh, we have, I, Angie's done more on it than I have. I can't take a lot of credit now. We, we've worked together on it, but she's done a lot of good work on it. Uh, COVID nineteen has taken a lot of people's time. The issues that I want you to understand before we start is we do not have a B P estimate for this year. The first estimate comes in April and we have not received that. We have received an email that we may get it on Friday. But Friday's going to be a little too late after our board meeting. So, uh, with this budget always has to be revised. And so I just want you to know that we just used the estimate that we had from last year's file. We, we cannot anticipate what that's going to be. Uh, the state finance meetings that we usually have in April have been canceled. And they said they're going to postpone them to May and we will do those virtually. So there may be stipulations that we don't know about that could affect this budget. So we don't have an A B P estimate. We haven't had any guidance from the state. And then by law, we're supposed to submit a budget to the county commission by May the first. However, it can be revised multiple times. So this is our first effort to stay within the law. Additionally, we do not have the certified property tax amount yet. So we don't know exactly what a cent will bring in. So we can't calculate that yet. But what we do know is.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't know what you need moving, but I'll take that eleven thousand dollars and come over and move some stuff for you.
Oh, that's a mower. Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, that's a typo. That's a mower. I'll explain that, yeah. I'll explain that to you. Sorry, that's a typo. That's a mower.
I explained it there.
Okay, a mover, eleven thousand dollar mover. I'm, I got you. I, I, anyway, that this budget does, uh, you know, with the passage of the non-certified raises, that the two point five percent is in this budget. Another thing is that, and I only, we have not been given this from the state at all, nothing official. I only see it through the news feeds that, uh, teachers certified positions were expected. Hopefully, I think Governor Lee originally wanted to do a four percent and then COVID nineteen hit and they backed it back to two percent. But they said when the legislature comes back in June, they might look at it again and try to bring that up. But right now, we just budgeted two percent for certified positions and that's contingent on P B P funding. Any questions about those raises that's in the budget?
No, the, the biggest worry I have about the budget, I think the state will do their part. Uh, they pretty much explained that, but I think we're going to take, I'm afraid we're going to take a big hit on sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, I think we're gonna, I just think all counties are going to get, get hit hard. And the fifty percent of it that goes to schools, it could really affect us going forward.
Right, right. And the B P is heavily funded from state sales tax.
Well, the state, they've got a hundred million dollars to fall back on in their rainy day fund. We don't.
Right.
I'm just talking about our local sales tax.
And then our health insurance, the only guidance that we, the guidance that we've been provided is the, the rate, the, uh, the increase in health insurance will be somewhere between six and seven percent. Uh, they have not told us exactly what that is yet because we hadn't had the finance meetings. So we could only calculate that at the highest amount, which was seven percent. We have, uh, included two hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay and I will show you that in, in just a minute. And this should not be any surprise to anybody because this came from the schools needs assessments. And these are the items that we discussed in the January board retreat. Uh, we always budget for a new bus. So there's ninety five thousand dollars for a bus. And then we also, that's not for a mover, that is actually a mower. And I don't know if we have to have a mower, but that's a expensive item. So we budget for it every, about every year or so. Uh, and then I want you to look at your fun bouts. So the first thing that I would like for you to look at is the capital outlays. And remember, we budgeted two hundred thousand. These are, again, these are estimates. They are pretty good estimates. David helped me with, uh, a lot of them today and he, and by next month, when we look at our budget again, uh, we could solidify these numbers a little closer. But the elementary's, uh, request was cafeteria tables on the, uh, the grades four and five wing. Uh, window blinds on the four and five wing where we painted, uh, they, they were, I think, Mr. Kerr, they were the original blinds when you started as principal out there.
Right.
And when they took them down, they all broke the piece and we never have replaced those. So the teachers don't have window blinds. Uh, the desk, we have done a great deal of work on our kindergarten, first and second grade student furniture. Uh, all of those desks are the original furniture that was, came with the building. And, uh, they would like to purchase, uh, uh, desks and chairs for the third, fourth and fifth grade.
So they will be a separate desk with a separate chair?
Yes, sir. That's what we've done in the lower grades and that, and it's also.
That's better.
And it's got a compartment in it where they can put their books.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And then, uh, the reading rugs, uh, they have become quite worn and dirty and. And then, uh, the reading rugs, uh, they have become quite worn and dirty, and especially with the COVID-19 and stuff. But they would like to get a new set of rugs to read on, uh, new easels for their read-alouds where they can write on them and do their flip charts. Uh, she needs two office desks, and she, her copiers and rizos are worn out. We talked about this early. And then a set of walkie-talkies, and th- those things are minimal. And we don't, we haven't estimated those yet, but certainly that's something she wants. Uh, Mr. McCall's wishlist is a little, uh, less. Uh, the, he needs new vestibule furniture when you come out front. What he's presently using is the old mower chairs that we had years ago when we bought these. So he got the hand-me-downs then, and they're worn out. And then everybody, I guess, I started this, but this is really good. Where we put the water filling stations going out to the playground with the renovation at the elementary school. They have used the heck out of those water fountains. Andy loves them. And all the other kids and principals and teachers have seen them, and they want three apiece in each one of their schools. And then, uh, Mr. McCall is looking for security. You know, his building is in the middle of town, and it's got streets that go all the way around, and a lot of people come on campus. And he would like to add about a dozen cameras to his security system. Uh, the high school, again, a couple of cameras for the auditorium, the water filling stations. They looked to buy some hexagon tables for, uh, I think that was four different classrooms, I think, and that would take care of it. Their furniture is aged too. Uh, their furniture came with that building, which is now over 20 years old. And there's a lot of broken desks, and some of them broke off and scratched in the floor. So they would like to do those hexagon tables and chairs, and a set of graphing calculators, and a set of special ed laptops. So these would be those one-time expenses. They're not reoccurring, that we can use from, uh, from fund balance. So in that budget, that you will see that that's a $200, uh, I mean, a $200,000, uh, item, which is a whole lot less than what we've been doing on these renovations to schools. But we've got our schools in really good shape. So, with that being said, and I don't know how much of this you can see. Uh, how's that look to y'all? Is that tough?
Well, we can take our pictures and make it bigger.
Okay. I'm gonna try to.
And actually, I'm following the wall on my iPad, so I can see if I have that.
Okay. I'm, uh.
Clint, also, we, uh, we want to clarify, you know, anybody who's been watching this, these, these recommendations come straight from the principals, uh, of what's needed in their buildings. And, uh, and we always really try to pay attention.
Yes, ma'am.
They're, they're the ones there, and they know. And so, uh, they, you know, we've always really tried to accommodate the things that they put in on their wish lists. So, it's fine and made.
And they want to be responsible, you know, they, you ought to hear them say, if you can do it, you know.
I know. I know.
And they really try to be thoughtful in their requests. But they also, they also need to get what they need so that we can effectively educate children too. We, I mean, that's.
Right.
I think that you can see that, uh, our current property tax, I think we estimated that at the 92% rate. I mean, let me see if I can find that. Yeah, we did that at the 92% rate. And which means a cent, we've estimated, we don't have an official, uh, amount yet. But we estimated that a, that a penny would bring in 23,289. And, uh, so that's about $80,000 more than we were projected to get next, I mean, from last year. We just need to, again, convince everybody that we need to keep getting our growth money because teacher salaries are going up, and, uh, health insurance costs are going up. We kept needing more furniture, things like that. Uh, I don't know how much of this y'all can see. Uh, they hear, I'm gonna take you to the last page. This is, that everybody says it's all about the bottom line. And, uh, and you can look at this yourself between now. Oh, there's, there's only one new teacher position that was added to teachers. You know, and you know how we had to hire a teacher at Christmas this year? So we added one more teacher. Uh, you never know when you have to add a teacher. Hopefully, you don't have to add more than one. Uh, but this, this is our, this is our, this is our actualized fund balance from FY19. And I think that's, I hope y'all see better than me. What is that, about 3.9 million?
Yes.
Okay. And then our budget, and of course, this number right here, the net change in fund balance in this column is where we live right now. This is FY20. And we know that our, our expenditures exceed our revenue, and that has a lot to do with the fiscal capacity and the loss from BEP. But we also know that we did that elementary project, and we're not quite through with that. And they are working on those middle school doors and those high school doors as part of that, expanding that project a little bit. But we're gonna get some money back from that. I don't know how much. And hopefully, we can save some money in this year. But if we used our budget exactly like it's penciled in, we would, uh, we would lose 1.6 million this year. And then at the end of, uh, June 30 of this year, we'd have 2.3 in fund balance. Uh, hopefully, we can do better than that. I, 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 I feel confident that we can. But I mean, that's where we are right now. These are, we have not tried to actualize these numbers at all. Now, when we go into this year's budget, the FY21, then our, our expenditures exceed our revenue by 1.5 million. But be thoughtful now that we don't know what our new BEP estimate is. You see, we only use the BEP numbers that we had last year. So we expect that that BEP's gonna be more and make a better difference in that. But just running off the numbers that we have, then our fund balance.
And it's leaving in there.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I was thinking that plan.
Yeah. Andy, you're bleeding in.
It was empty.
Okay. And, uh, and then that would leave our fund balance at the end of next year. It's slightly over 700,000.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah. So then, again, these are the things that we've been talking about for X amount of years that we're living off the fund balance. And we have to be aware of that. But remember that this is not an extravagant budget by any shade of imagination. That we only added one teacher, our health insurance went up 7%. Our teacher salaries ought to go up every year because as they increase with years of experience and degrees, then those will grow as you go along. So, uh, I'm, I'm sure that we can do better than this. I want to be sure that you hear that. But just using the numbers right now and keeping the emotion out of it, this is where we stand as of today. And after we have our BEP estimate, and after we have our finance meetings, I think we can get you a whole lot better number. But we need to pass this budget in order to get to meet the deadline of May the first to present it to the county commission. Just be mindful that we can revise our budget multiple times after it goes to the county court. Questions and comments?
The only comment I might make is I do believe back on page one, you're gonna probably take a hint, a hit on sales tax. It might not be a bad idea to just ask the mayor's office if they're putting anything in like that in their budget.
Yeah, and I don't remember exactly. We, we saw sales tax, we were online, we were online before COVID-19. We thought, just on our estimates, we thought we were going to get about $80,000 more in local option sales tax than we did in the prior year. But now since COVID-19 hit, I don't know what that's going to be, Mr. Kerr.
Right.
Oh, Mr. Kerr, what were you, what were you saying that, um, to check with the mayor's office to see if they're gonna put what in? What are you?
Well, I just wondered if they were gonna put in a lower number on sales tax.
I gotcha.
You know, uh, if they're, they, they get, they may get access to those signatures or something more quicker than we do. I don't know. But, you know, it's just something to think about. But like, it's not a big deal right now. Like Clint said, we can redo this. They can redo this multiple times. We just have to have a document to them by May first.
Right.
To meet the policies of the county court.
And, 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 um, and board members, I, I want to be here, that we, Angie and I stand by the expenditures really well. I mean, we know what they are. We, we've watched those. It's the revenue that we don't know about.
Right. Right.
And we didn't know control over that.
Right.
Right. But that's been the case for the past four years, basically. You know, with us leasing funding from BEP.
Right. And then it'd be interesting to see what the difference is in that when this next BEP comes out. See, because the first year, it was like 307, I, I mean, $370,000. And this year is about $370,000. And, you know, it could get up in the 400 range, uh, next year, because remember, he's had a, he has a three-year phase in. And FY21 is the third and final year of the phase in. But what everybody needs to understand, that it doesn't go away after the third year. It continues for eternity. You know, that, that difference does. So, uh, it's certainly something that we have to, uh, keep our eye on, so to speak. Okay? That, Ms. Waller, if that's all you have, I think y'all ready to talk about graduation?
Yes, uh, we do want to, one, one thing I want to bring up before we get into graduation, because I know that'd be a long, uh, conversation. A lot of information, is I was going to present, uh, had we been in meeting, uh, a, um, a ballot for, uh, me to run again on the Utrust, uh, board. And so I just wanted to bring that up for all of you guys. I think I have to have one or two signatures. Um, but, and I, you know, I'll reach out and, and grab a couple of you somewhere, but just want to make sure that that's good with the board, that I run again and serve on the Utrust board.
Absolutely. I'm good with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great honor for our system and for you to be able to continue in that.
Absolutely. They're a great, great organization, so, and I enjoy it. So I will, uh, get that taken care of and get a couple of signatures and send that in to Christie. Uh, but the one thing I feel like that, uh, we, we talked a little bit as we were joining, uh, the conference this evening. Uh, we all, I feel like, have received some phone calls, emails, uh, text messages about the concern of the graduation, uh, program. And, uh, and I think it's valid. I think, uh, you know, John graduated two or three years ago, and uh, I would have never thought of us not having, Mary had a, a graduation ceremony, right? And, uh, what'd be, yeah, what'd be, I think we have, uh, we have the most recent, uh, kids that's graduated. But, um, I know Mr. Kerr shares in the same, uh, philosophy and Denise, that we feel like we need to talk about that. And, uh, the majority of the parents that have contacted me, because my question is, uh, you know, when do you know where, where to move it? Like, we don't have an ending to, uh, to COVID-19. And, uh, so how do we know where to set it? And what's your plan B on that? And just to kind of toss it out there and let you guys, uh, come out with any kind of suggestions. Now, Dr. Satterfield and I talked this afternoon on our, uh, Zoom and, uh.
Practice.
Experience. Right. Uh, that, uh, he said, I, you know, I can't change graduation, the date of graduation. I'm like, what? What are you talking about? He said, I can't change it. You guys can change it. Uh, so, uh, so I do think as a board, you know, we need to talk about it, and, and I'll open it up for discussion and see what you guys have to say.
I have a question for Clint first. Uh, Clint, has the State Board of Education, I mean, the State Department of Education offered any guidance on graduation, or is that purely a local matter?
It's purely a local matter.
Okay.
They, uh, it's, it's up to you, it's up to you guys. And then what I was telling Ms. Waller today was, is the school board sets the district calendar, the school calendar. And, uh, you decide when we start school, when we end school, when we have our breaks, those types of things. And that, that calendar is put into the, the state, uh, attendance, uh, system. So, uh, I, I can't change that date. That's a board decision. So, uh, the only thing that I've been telling people is that we're gonna have a graduation. Based on what I, I heard the board speak about the last time we met, that we wanted to have a graduation if all possible. And I've tried to tell people, we're gonna have a graduation, and Ms. Dickerson is working with Jostens to, to, she set a date for them to come get their cap and gowns. Uh, we got diplomas in. Ms. Russell is working on those things. And, uh, we want to have a graduation for our kids, and we're gonna do everything that we can. Uh, the date and how, when y'all want to do that, uh, certainly, you know, y'all need to decide how you want to do that. You may want to look at alternate dates. You might want to say, if we can't graduate on the 22nd, then we would have an alternate date. But that's a discussion.
Clint, you said, uh, in our, in our conversation, because that was my concern, where do, where do you set that date? Uh, so that it would, you know, jive with all of our, uh, families? I know plans have been made way ahead, and some have, are gonna be out of town, or those kinds of things. You said that we might could survey our parents, um, maybe shoot up a couple, three dates out there and, uh, and send a survey to our parents, and much like we do our, uh, teacher chapter, our, our staff calendar, is we shoot them two or three options?
We can, we can.
And come back with, look at, you know, what's gonna work for the majority of our, our parents and our seniors. What do you guys think about that?
Let the parents decide. I think that's, that was your saying, Regina?
What's that, Denise?
I said, are you saying to the parents about three dates, you let them decide?
Yeah, just to do.
Yeah, third date. Yeah, I think, I think that's a good idea. Yes.
I do too.
Yeah, and I, I might get them checked. All the emails that I got this afternoon, and I got a few of them just right before we, you know, logged onto this meeting, but everyone wants us to move it sometime later where we can have a, a graduation with parents, just like a regular graduation.
Right. Right. Right.
I got a fake email also, and they even suggested moving it to the football field so it could be outside.
Yeah, in case we were still, yeah, in case we were still social distancing, right? Denise, when her, if it happens. And that, and I'm thinking, you know, that would be a safe option. That way, we wouldn't have to change the plan again. But, uh, how feasible is that, Clint, to, uh, plan on using our football field? We've never done that before.
No, we have.
We've never had to move, we've never had to move graduations and do these things else either. So, y'all, we've done a good job so far. We could surely, uh, I know with our staff, we can pull it together and celebrate with the kids, so. What do you think about the football field?
We have had it at the football field before. And may nobody remember it, but I remember when I started teaching and, and Buddy Russ was principal. You remember that, Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
We had it a couple of years at the football field. And, uh, you know, hey, you know, I don't mind using the football field, you know.
The only thing you have to do if you're gonna, got it scheduled for the football field.
Somebody got some music playing.
That's Mr. Krueger. He's brought the motion.
The only thing about the football field is you have to have plan B in case of weather.
That's right.
And that is exactly what stopped it from being at the football field. We, we had a thunderstorm come up and we had to move it quickly into the gym and moved everything. People got wet and I think Russ says, I'll never have it back down here again.
I think that's right. And you can't blame it. You want to get everything set up and have everything go as smooth as possible.
Right.
Right.
But I think, I think if you would give me some things, I mean, I've got people, you know, that can do these surveys. Here's something we've learned about COVID-19 and a school closure. We're sending a lot more texts to parents.
Right.
And my text is only 160 characters. So when you send out a survey link, that's probably got 25 in it. It's hard to send out that link. But this new system that I got, that we've been using for about a year, I didn't realize that I can use 160 characters and then attach a link to it and the link doesn't count as my characters.
Oh, good. So you can explain a little bit. You can, you can give them an introduction and explain what we're trying to gather from the survey and give them the link to take the survey.
Right. Now, what I will need to do is to fix that link where you only get one vote. Do you, you see what I'm saying? You can't do multiple votes.
Stuff the box.
They can't stuff the ballot box. And that our seniors need to be sure that they have, they're calling the office. You know, everybody don't sign up for those text messages. So you know, we can go in there and click just the seniors, you know, just the 12th graders. And we can send them a survey, but if they didn't sign up for the texts, then they wouldn't get the vote. You see what I'm saying?
Right. And when you're saying seniors, is that the senior parent or the senior themselves?
It's whoever they put down is their contact. See, a lot of times, we ask the kid to give us their parent, but sometimes they don't do it and they put their own, right Andy? You know, they put their own. So, but everybody that's provided a text number to us that's in the 12th grade, we can send them a survey, is what I'm saying.
I, I feel like those that are very interested in this through word of mouth will not doubt about it and find a way to make their feelings known. Uh, so I, I don't really worry about that. You know, and we can't require all of them to come. There may be those going off to work or the military or something. And, and so we would just have to have a, a opportunity for them to come probably to the central office and pick up their diploma. And, but for those who want the experience of a graduation and to have family and friends there, that's what this is for.
Right, right.
I would like to see us give them the opportunity to provide it. And I mean, it may get taken out of our hands. We don't know. But you know, if it does, it does. We can't do anything about that. I'd like to see us provide that opportunity. And I think the survey is a very good idea.
Okay, let me ask you this. I, I still think I, you know, this is our April board meeting and our, we wouldn't be able to meet again until May the, May the 14th. So if you made a decision on April the 4th, I mean, excuse me, May the 14th, I mean, what I'm saying is, is this a decision you want to make this month? Or is this a one you want to wait a month on where you'll know more about where you are with this COVID-19 situation?
Oh, I think you're exactly right. Uh, uh, you know, the governor has just shut things down through the end of this month. May 1st, that Friday, uh, we don't know what's gonna happen. And so it might, it might be that you might start working on your survey.
Right.
Want to ask and those type of things. But I think until we know for sure what the governor's going to allow, we're, we're really being a little premature at this time. I think the main thing about tonight is it seems like everybody's in favor of, of providing some sort of formal graduation to our current seniors, especially depending upon how their senior year has been taken from them.
Okay.
Right.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is if we get back in school or they will relax the social distancing or the safe at home and we can have a graduation on May the 22nd like we've always had, we're ready to go, right?
Right.
If we.
We're actually wanting to get, get prepared for a backup plan.
If we can't.
Not, not put the backup plan in place.
Right. If we can't, when we meet on May the 14th, if I have the survey completed and we put it on the agenda, then we'll know more about where you are and you can make a backup decision at that meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I need to run the survey about a week prior. You know what I'm saying? We're, like, wouldn't you say? I mean, I don't need to run the survey now because we don't know what the landscape is. Is that correct?
Exactly. That's what I said. Just, you know, be thinking about how you want to do it. And I would also be interested in hearing Teresa's comments.
Oh, yeah.
This possibly Thursday night. Uh, if we could, uh, I don't want to hold her for the whole meeting, but maybe we could put this as a discussion item at the beginning.
Yeah.
And she could uh, zoom in on us and we could discuss this and, cause we're not gonna be making a final decision anyway.
That's a good, yes, sir. That's good. Okay, now, let me ask you thi, okay. And then y'all can talk about what those survey options are. You know, like gymnasium, football field, drive up. You know, somebody even told me that they saw a place where you drive by in your car and they hand you the diploma in your car. I mean, I'm not advocating for that. I'm not advocating for that at all. I'm just saying there's a lot of options. So let's say Thursday night, y'all can talk with Ms. Dickerson about options and dates. Like if May the 22nd is not possible, then I need to hear from you guys about what to put on the survey. Or give me two other possible dates. You know, maybe one in June and one in July.
Right, right. And let Teresa, I know you will, but let Teresa know we want to discuss this.
Yes, sir.
So she can be thinking of possible options.
Okay, I will, I will do that. I'll get that done.
Sounds good, sounds good. Uh, I think, I think that, I think the parents, that makes them feel uh, better. That, and if we told them, I know I responded to the ones I had. It was certainly on our radar. And we'd already discussed it, you know, at our last meeting. So uh, I feel like May 14th will know a lot better and make a better decision. So uh, sounds, that sounds great to me. I feel like they'll feel better just knowing that we got them, you know. We wanted to hear of it, so.
That's right.
Is there anything else that needs to be discussed uh, for our?
Regina? Regina?
Yes, sir.
You're pro, uh, from what I understand, you're a pretty big Facebooker, aren't you?
Yes, I.
A lot of the parents may be uh, may be free. Might just put that on Facebook tonight and that they could see the meeting in the morning.
Yes.
You know, how to access this meeting in the morning. But let them know that we did discuss it and that we're gonna discuss it more at Thursday night's meeting and they should be able to access that meeting live uh, Thursday night.
Okay, I can do that. Yeah.
And I, I would feel about that, Andy. We're gonna be good to go?
I hope so.
Andy said we'll be good to go. Hey, I just, again, I will say, we apologize for the technical difficulties. However, we will certainly be within the Open Meetings Act by having this uh, video posted within two days of the meeting. And Andy says we'll get it posted first thing in the morning for our, for our parents.
And I, the link to watch, uh, to watch the, our meeting Thursday night live will be on our website.
Yes, and the idea is that they would go, Ms. Jackson, I mean, Ms. Waller, is they'll go to the top of our website, with the gold bar where it says Board of Education. Click on Board of Education, over on the right side where it has the agendas posted for the month. There will be a link there where they can watch the meeting live.
Okay.
There was a link there today to watch the work session live, but Andy couldn't get through the firewall this afternoon. So he's gonna work on punching that out.
He's gonna sharpen up his axe.
He's gonna sharpen up his axe and get through firewall for Thursday. So we'll, we'll apologize. We, we are truly apologize for that. We are excited that we've got all of our board members on the Zoom call and we've got a really good setup. So we'll get, we're learning and we'll get to a better place.
Right. Sounds good. Is everybody uh, good? Anything else to be discussed or brought up?
I have, I have a question. Our next board meeting will be in May on the 14th, which that's actually the second Thursday, but are we having it until the third day, third Thursday? Are we having it on the 14th because our graduation and everything would be on the 22nd? Is that why we've changed that meeting to the second, third in the month for May?
That's, that was my thinking. I'm sorry about that. Yeah, you'll.
That's fine. I know we did that last year and I was just, I just wanted to make sure I had it in my mind correct. So no, that's great for May.
Let me put that on the agenda for you tomorrow, I mean, for Thursday and let the board vote on that date. Is that good?
Sounds good.
That's a good idea.
That's National Nursing Home Week for me, but I will, I'll be able to work around afternoon's uh, meeting. So I'll put that on my calendar right now.
Okay.
So, sounds good. All right, guys. If nothing else, I guess we can um, say bye-bye and see you guys Thursday evening, same time.
Sounds good.
Just look for, look for the invitation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Stay well and stay safe.
You too, guys.
Y'all too.